This week's episode is made possible by our friends at Independent Bank. You can learn more about them at I-bankonline.com. Good morning, Memphis. You're listening to Meanwhile in Memphis on WYXR Radio 91.7 FM. Meanwhile in Memphis is a program dedicated to conversations that celebrate the organizations, initiatives, and people that are shaping Memphis for the better. The Meanwhile in Memphis radio show and podcast are brought to you by New Memphis, a nonprofit organization whose mission is to develop, activate, and retain the city's most important resource, its people.
Your hosts today are me, Raquel Miranda Capacaccia, and my colleague, Anna Thompson. Before we get started today, we have a couple of upcoming events to tell you about. You can always stay up to date on the happenings of New Memphis at newmemphis.org/events.
Coming up on August 9th, we will have the New Memphis Leadership Summit. Teamwork makes the dream work. The New Memphis Leadership Summit will feature a variety of breakout sessions with learning opportunities designed to strengthen the skills of individual leaders and to shape organizations. Bring your team to collect all of the knowledge. Table sales end soon, and group rates are available on the ticketing page. Head over to newmemphis.org to purchase your tickets. TEDxMemphis, the mixtape, is turning up the volume to amplify big ideas. Experience the magic of Memphis at this live event on Saturday, September 28th. Learn more and get early bird tickets while they last at tedx-memphis.com.
Your voice and your vote matter. State and federal primary and county general elections are just around the corner. For election details and a sample ballot, head over to electionsshelbytn.gov. August 1st, this Thursday, is Election Day. Vote at your polling location. You can learn more about the impact of local elections in our previous podcast conversations, Rock the Vote Ballot Basics 101 with Ian Randolph of the Shelby County Voter Alliance, and on the record Ballot Basics 102, where political journalists Samuel Hardeman and Catherine Burgess share how local news coverage impacts culture and why having the press as a watchdog for government will always come in handy. Both of these episodes will be linked in the show notes for you, as well as our recent conversation with elected officials. Today, we're excited to host a conversation with the leader of the Shelby County Commission. We'll learn about the path to public office, what the county commission is responsible for and what it's not responsible for, and where and how citizens of Memphis and Shelby County can engage with our public leaders. Joining us today is Chairwoman Miska Clay Bibbs of the Shelby County Board of Commissioners. She was elected in August of 2022, representing District 11. During her first year on the Shelby County Board of Commissioners, she served as the Vice Chair. She previously served on the Memphis-Shelby County Board of Education for eight years, where she served as Chair of the Board for two of those eight years. Chairwoman Clay Bibbs is a native Memphian and is a proud graduate of White Station High School. Go Spartans! She received her Bachelor of Arts degree with a concentration in marketing from Hampton University and is currently working on a graduate degree at the University of Memphis. Upon graduation, she decided to follow her passion and come home to help manage a congressional campaign. She worked for the congressional office for several years, where she learned the importance of education advocacy, community development, and that we all deserve to have our voice heard. After leaving the congressional office, she served in various roles at Memphis-Shelby County Schools, Memphis City Schools, using her experience in fundraising, community relations, marketing, media relations, and community development to advance Memphis and its education system forward. She has served in executive leadership positions with innovative national education nonprofits such as Teach for America Memphis and Teach Plus. Chairwoman Clay Bibbs is also a two-time New Memphis alum, graduating from the Fellows in 2009 and from the LDI in 2024. She is frequently a guest on our Real Deal Government Public Leadership and Review Boards over the years, and has been a great friend to New Memphis. The chairwoman is very active in the Memphis community and has served on several boards. She is a proud member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated and a member of the River City Tennessee Chapter of the Lynx Incorporated. She is the proud mother of one son, Langston, who attends Tennessee State University. Let's welcome Chairwoman Miska Clay Bibbs.
Good morning. We are in the studio today with Chairwoman Miska Clay Bibbs, Shelby County Board of Commissioners. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you for making time in your busy schedule to join us for this very important conversation ahead of another very important season. It is election season, but as we will get into a little bit later, this topic is of the utmost importance all year long, 24/7/365, and we are very excited to have it with you today. So let's get started by having you share a little bit about yourself.
Absolutely. Well, first, thank you for letting me come here and share with you today. I enjoy conversations like this because oftentimes people seem to kind of forget that at the core of why we serve is because we're supposed to be bringing community along the way with us. So I enjoy any opportunity I get to have a conversation about the work. But more importantly, a little bit about myself. You know, if I just use a couple of words, I would start off first by saying mother, daughter, sister, friend, public servant. I think that's the great way that I think of myself and how I make decisions every day around how I've served. I am a former school board member. I served on the Memphis-Shelby County School Board. Then we were Shelby County Schools. You know, a couple of name changes comes with the territory. I served there for eight years. Two of those years, I was Chair of the Board. So at that time, when I was Chair of that body, the budget was bigger kind of than where it is today, because we were really dealing with federal, extra federal dollars because of COVID. So it was no, it was very easy to transition from school board to county commission, if I talk about present day, coming on in 2022, as a history-making body where you had five Black women elected in one night to represent across Shelby County. And previously before that, that had only been four Black women ever in the history of Shelby County to actually be elected to a seat. And they did not all serve at the same time.
Correct.
So.
Let's have a moment for that. I mean, that's huge. A round of applause for that. That's a very big milestone. So.
Absolutely. I started out early. Let me just say this, that I mentioned school board, and that's just so important to me because at the core of who I am is education. I always joke and say that education wasn't something I didn't choose. Education chose me. At the age, well, now I guess I gotta get comfortable with saying these numbers. I hit a milestone birthday on Sunday. But straight out of college, I worked for Congressman Harold Fort Jr. I came in being one of his deputy campaign managers for his first election cycle. So we were so young, and we felt like we could rule the world, which we did to a certain degree. We came in early on, making a lot of change, making a lot of noise, and really understanding that we had the power of the vote. I don't think there's been an election since 96 where you had the most voters between that 18 to 25 age range. That was our work.
That sounds like a challenge for our young listeners out there.
I mean, it's an opportunity to. It absolutely is. You think about, we're in the year of 2024. It not, that was 96, and we haven't had that type of impact from 18 to 25 since then.
What do you think one of the differences was that year? Why do you think?
I mean, I think it was huge because people, we saw, we saw each other. We saw ourselves. We saw ourselves in the candidate. We saw ourselves in having the opportunity to make change. Now I'm getting old because now I'm thinking about, what was our, a new vision? It was a new vision. That was the campaign slogan for that point in time. But the reality of it is, I think we were all hungry around understanding what Memphis and Shelby County could look like for us, because at that time, programs such as Memphis Challenge, Inroads, all of those programs, I'm a Memphis Challenger. So we were, it was driven into us around understanding that we had to come back home to make change. So for me, I think when you look at a good number of those people who were on that campaign, we're all serving community, the ones that are still here in Memphis and Shelby County, in a way in which I could just, you know, get a list and you go, oh, oh, oh! You know, you're doing that now. So we knew that we had an opportunity to be the difference. It is a challenge for those 18 to 25-year-olds currently. I need them to see themselves. They have the opportunity to be this change. I think that's what we were doing. Using it to say, the former congressman had Education-Workforce Development as one of his major committees. So that meant, that was my committee. So hence, education chose me. I spent a lot of time thinking about education policy, understanding workforce development. But at the same time, my running joke was, if the building, house storefront had the word "school" on it, we visited it. It didn't matter if it was public, private, independent. Look, or somebody came up today and say, I'm homeschooling. But if it had the word "school" on it, we made a visit to that location. And through that, just my passion for kind of understanding that public education, just education in general, in then District 9, as a congressional district, should look different. So I had, I began the work of what it meant to work in just community development, about voice for parents, voice for community, understanding like, well, how do you change education? For a brief year, I tried some corporate work, didn't work, had to go right back to nonprofit. Because, because I'm an action-oriented person. I often say, as far as talking, I don't talk a lot, but I will do a lot. Because I like to see something changed through the action. And from that, that's kind of all she wrote. I've worked in nonprofit, education, community development, work, policy work. Honestly, as I hit this milestone birthday on Sunday for over 24 years.
What initially prompted you to seek public office for yourself?
Let me be honest. I don't think that that was on my plan. I, there is a former school board member then when it's Memphis City Schools. Now I can say this story because my son is 22. When I was going to, at one point, run for school board, because that person encouraged me to do it. And I think like within, I pulled the petition, I had the names, was about to turn it in, and then I think shortly after that, I found out I was pregnant with my son. He came first. So I decided that that moment, then clearly not my time, but this is something I really wanted to do. Then I actually worked for Memphis City Schools for almost 10 years in administration, saw a lot of things, were, you know, was making an impact there. Really thought when the merger happened and then kind of that merger, demerger time period, I left and I was like, oh, wow, okay, I'm gone. Good. That was 10 years of my life. What were we gonna do next? And within that new charter for the school district, the district and the community that I represented on the school board, that became a new seat. That same person who served on the school board back then called me up and said, "Okay, this is your time now. You do know that like this was created just for you." And I was like, "How do you know?" He was like, "Look, I'm just going through vote getter." And, and I didn't even realize that this was your district. It was a very kind of, it was a last-minute thing. It was not, oh, I'd been like chomping at the bit, waiting to put my name on a ballot. It was not that at all. I think especially because when I left, I pretty much was like, "Oh, I'm trying to create a new chapter. Let's look at something different." Ironically, I left the district, six months later, I came back as a school board member.
What was the most surprising thing in the process of like actually running a campaign?
I think, well, for me, it was a little different because I'd run, been a part of a lot of campaigns. I helped a lot of people win. I, you know, understood canvassing. I understood knocking on doors. I understood that that's what you have to do in order to win. It's not about just simply putting your name on the ballot. I think for me, the biggest switch was the mind, for me, was more so, "Oh, I'm the person. I'm not telling people to go vote for somebody else. I'm the person." And I think within that conversation, it helped me to really understand, to just drill down on what was important to me when I talked to people around why they should support me. And, and that really just, again, through the lens of, as a mother, what was important to me, as, you know, a community voice, what was important to me, understanding what did I want the district to look like for me as a, as a mother? And especially raising a young Black man.
What was the most surprising thing once you were seated?
For school board or for county commission? No, I'm gonna say for school board, it wasn't that much of a heavy lift because my work involved working with school board members. So it wasn't a huge lift for me. I think the biggest thing to me was understanding that not everybody knew what I knew. Because like it was certain situations, like, oh, well, we've been doing that. Or, oh, this looks different. Like, oh, let me then give, I was more of a historian, quite honestly, as a school board member, because I spent a lot of time talking about, how did we get where we were? And why was it so important for either to correct a thing or to keep a thing moving? So for me, I think it was surprising that I had to take on kind of that role. On the county commission side, I want to say, it was more maybe a little different in, because we really serve more as a single-member district type of work versus school board is more pushed as a collective work, because you're affecting the whole. And on the county commission, these are issues that are across the county. So you have to really, yes, make sure you take care of your district, but at the same time, what is best for all?
How do you walk that line? That's gotta be a really tough thing. I think it's something that we so often either criticize politicians for or elected officials.
It's not easy.
Yeah.
It absolutely is not easy, I think. But because the things that we're responsible for are more global, kind of whole-community issues, you can kind of toe the line a little differently. When you think of county government, because often, I find myself, quite honestly, in a lot of my town halls and a lot of my conversations with voters and constituents, is about the difference between city government and county government.
Yes.
County government, the three buckets: education, our public health system, and so, and just our justice system. So, and I think about that, it's easy for me to think about those three buckets because a lot of money that we're looking at now has to go into capital improvements, and that means building schools, repairing schools, building a new hospital. As if you don't, you know, for those who just want to really narrow down on it, when I say our public health system, that's the Health Department, as well as Regional One. Regional One is our public hospital. So we need a new hospital for Regional One. Then you look at the justice system, we need a new jail. So, so for me, I'm really laser-focused on those three buckets, because those are the things we really have to tackle on the county commission about that work. But at the same time, of course, when you think about education, it comes the budget for education. It comes the idea around how do you support communities to make sure that they have everything they need, but that is essentially the job of the school board. We can support them through it. But I can't show up at a school board meeting anymore and make a vote about it. But what I can do is say, I will give money to a thing, or I will take money away from a thing.
Okay. And are there buckets that you would say happen for city government or not?
I mean, you know, so like for city government, they're, you know, they're responsible for all of that kind of everyday living, your trash, your streets, MLGNW, those, you know, MPD. We do have the Sheriff Department on the county side, so don't want to not include them, but that's when I talk about jail and 201, that is the Sheriff's Department. So for me, as a county commissioner that represents communities in the city, it gets real tricky.
Are there any areas either inclusive of or outside of those three buckets where city and county overlap?
I mean, there's some shared when it comes for land use. There's some shared regarding zoning. But those are really larger conversations that you won't even, can't really think about until it happens. We do have, think about transportation, there's some shared work there. Although we're not responsible for MATA on the county side, the city's responsible for funding MATA. We do give about a million dollars or so towards MATA, and that just happened recently. And that's within the past, I want to say, four years. That has not been a consistent conversation on Shelby County government side. That was because Mayor Harris wanted to give something at that time, and then he's had a commission that's, has supported that.
What is one thing that you wish Shelby County residents better understood about the commission and about the council?
Who does what? I'm gonna be very honest.
I was about to say, yeah.
It's, and I know it's tricky because it's really difficult, especially if you, if, well, I was gonna say, especially if you move to Memphis and Shelby County. But let me be honest, even people who grew up here don't understand the difference between what the city government is and what the county government is, and what city council is responsible for and what county commission is responsible for. So hence why I said, a lot of times in my town hall meeting, I spend a lot of time around educating around what I can really help people with, and at the same time, making them aware that I'm a partner in supporting them about advocating for, with the city. Because I'm a resident, like, you know, I wanted to work well too. I have some of the same issues that I, you know, sent an email about. Look, if you send it to me, I'm just gonna forward it on, and what she said, and what he said to it. Because honestly, I don't mind being an extra voice or an explanation point for someone. That is the work of it. I think, and that's difficult, but we, we work well together in the sense of things are functioning. So could things be better? Absolutely. You know, there's always that old age question around, do we need to consolidate? I'm not gonna touch that on this podcast.
We would never ask you to.
That's not what this is about. But as long as we're living in this world, I think as long as people understand the function of both, it will help out a lot around how to make it better.
Is there some kind of like basic level, I don't know, like introductory that we should be doing at a lower, like in elementary school and middle school that would like even from, to help understand, so that you wouldn't have to spend so much of your time educating about the differences? You could spend more of your, like you said, on the action, the stuff you love?
I don't, you know, I don't think it's really the conversation for a core, for school-age kids. I think maybe for a traditional civics class for a high schooler that's like an 11th or a 12th grader, because they're getting ready to register to vote, and, you know, turning 18, maybe for them, I think a good solid civics government class, that should be tackled in that. Ironically, someone asked me the question around, well, how did you learn all of this? How did you know? Because that's when I learned it, like I would say in middle school, I had a phenomenal American history government teacher. He's now passed on, Mr. Jackson at White Station Middle School. So I came out of school knowing, because he would tackle those things. And then when I made it to high school, we had a, I, I'm the history person. I'm the government person. I took US History. I think I had AP Civics, all of the things. So I was tackling it then, because I always just had an interest in knowing, well, who are the leaders at a young age? I wasn't, you know, like, who are the people who can change the thing? Who are people doing the thing? Who's in the know? I had a lot of great relationships, ironically, with school administrations in my building, because I realized they're the decision-makers, not the teachers. So, you know. But I think there's an opportunity there, especially when you're getting ready to turn 18 and registering to vote. These are the things you need to know before you go into the booth.
You mentioned that, you know, a citizen might, a constituent might send you an email, and it may not be an issue that you can solve. Say it is an issue that you can solve. How do you best communicate with your constituents beyond the town halls that you mentioned?
Oh, for me, I answer emails, or I have a staff member to make sure they respond back. I think it's being clear on understanding how you can really help and what the steps are to helping. One of the things that I think is different about, of course, beyond the county commission side, is we have designated staff. So that's their job to make sure that not only are they following up with constituents, but just if it's something that we can change on our side, that's an email or a phone call, or understanding how to direct them through, to a county department, they make sure that happens. I think it's really important to respond. I do think that a lot of times I get a lot of all types of issues because people are used to me responding.
Ooh, a blessing and a curse sometimes, yeah.
But I also don't have any problem with saying, although this is not in my purview, I know it is such-and-such's job to do this on the city side. Or I know it's such-and-such's job to do this. Sometimes it could be just a community issue that is not necessarily a government issue, and I will say, this is who you need to talk to. I do call myself as more of a connector, as well around community. So I don't have any problems doing that. And I think that's oftentimes, it may be a disconnect for people who are elected because they may, if they can't answer, then sometimes it kind of gets a part of the mucky-muck, and they don't answer, versus I believe, always respond to people. Give them something back, whether you can help them or not. Because it's your, the goal should be, you don't want them out there lingering.
So interesting. Have you ever changed your position based on feedback from constituents?
Absolutely. Happens all the time.
Like, we could like go off on a tangent here, but I won't make you do that.
Like, I'd love an example, but only if you're comfortable.
I mean, you know, I think a lot of it happens just organically every day. I mean, I would be, any public servant or elected person would be foolish to say that they know everything. I think you have to be open to understanding exactly why a constituent feels a way about a thing. Oftentimes, and, but then also, I'm very honest with people and say, and I will say, I'm not sure where I'm landing, but thank you for offering me your point of view.
I respect that so much. And to your point of like answering back, that, that bit of confidence and knowing that like you are heard as a constituent, I feel like goes so far, and knowing that even if it didn't, for example, change the outcome of XYZ, knowing that somebody took the time to listen to you and/or to your point, to reroute it to somewhere if it does need to go somewhere else, makes a lot of difference. And I do feel like it builds the trust of the community, whether that's through the county or through the city government.
Absolutely.
And I think that's something that, I email our public leaders more than the average person in my role at New Memphis. But I'm always so pleasantly surprised at how quickly, promptly, with such thoughtful feedback, you all respond. And I think that that's something that's unique to Memphis and Shelby County, because I think you could go live somewhere else in a similar-sized market with a similar-sized governing body, and not be able to say, "I know who my county commissioner is. I know who my city councillor is. I know who my super-district city councillor is." And, and they will respond to you. I've emailed Mayor Harris and gotten a response from Mayor Harris or from his office. And it's, you know, I think that that's something special about Memphis and that maybe a lot of people don't get to experience. But if you do, it's something that I think we should all take the time to appreciate. So thank you.
Absolutely.
How do you inspire Memphis and Shelby County residents to take an active role in initiatives?
That's a great thing about, I think different people are inspired by different, in different ways. I represent kind of an older community. So for me, and as I can't leave here without saying 11, because, you know, my tagline, leaving school board to county commission was 7 to 11. And ironically, both those numbers mean so much to me. So when you're representing kind of an older community, and 11 is Fox Meadows, southeast Shelby County, Hickory Hill, Parkway Village, a piece of the airport corridor. And when you, and when you really look at those communities, for me, as someone on the school board side and on the county commission side, I grew up in these communities. I can honestly say, even when I didn't live in Memphis, I was still rooted here in those communities. I remember when. So for me, I look at it as, what is it that I want to empower my community to remember they have a voice for? Helping them to understand, they do have the power to talk about the crime in their community. They do have an opportunity to talk about the fact that a lot of, you know, the homes that were owned are now being owned by rental people who are renting them and out-of-town people who don't care about the community in the same way. So I help them understand, how do you really advocate about the blight that we're looking at and watching? And those voices are also people that I can also say who are like, you know, aunts, uncles, grandmothers, you know, granddads, you know, people who've seen me, watched me grow up, all of the things. But they also know their voice matters. And that, to me, is really important. So it's easy to inspire them because they are, they show up ready. I think where I am constantly working on, and always an opportunity, as some of the newer residents, that especially in the Fox Meadows community, who are new to the area, who are finding great homes and becoming homeowners, just reminding them to get into the process. Like, I knocked on a lot of doors in my community, and it was a lot of newer homeowners. And a lot of them were like, "Oh, you know, I don't even know. I hadn't even thought about it." And I'm like, this is what we do over here. This is what we're for. So I think, and that's, that counted to me as more of, that's not just my community. I think that's overall, as we talked about earlier, activating people to exercise their right via their vote.
And we do have an upcoming election on August 1st. But outside of going to the polls, which I do not want to gloss over here, let me just take a moment and say, everybody, please, if you have not early voted, if you have not early voted, go out to your voting location on August 1st, to make sure that your voice is heard and your vote is counted. Um, but it's so much more than just during election season.
Oh, yeah.
That these governing bodies are important. What insights would you give to community residents to kind of keep their finger on the pulse of what's happening?
I think it's really important to, um, if there's an issue that really is something you wanna advocate for, as I mentioned earlier, don't have any, um, don't hold back in emailing, don't hold back in calling, don't hold back in actually coming to a meeting and pulling a comment card. Um, that really is where a lot of things happen. Um, we do that in committee, which is on, which our committees are on Wednesday, but it also in the actual voting day on a Monday. I think email campaigns do work. Um, I've, I've seen them, uh, work, but I think more importantly, if you step back and say, oh, I don't know, or oh, it's not gonna work, then you're not even giving yourself a chance to make a difference.
Switching gears a little bit, um, the county commission is a, is a partisan body.
It is.
So how do you build consensus with people on the other side of the aisle within county commission?
I, I mean, I think it's, uh, not a difficult thing to do if you are having real conversations of what's best for Shelby County overall. I mean, we're partisan because we're elected by communities, and it just becomes partisan just from the idea of like Shelby County government is, is all seven municipalities being represented at one time. So most people, regardless of what party you're in, care about education, care about a public health system, care about, uh, our justice system. We may not necessarily agree on exactly how you get there, but I think, um, being willing to have the conversation about it is the most important part of it and seeing, finding some commonalities. I think sometimes, um, people from different parties decide on, well, we're just not gonna talk at all. And I don't wanna leave here saying that we agree on everything, cause that's not true at all. But, um, I am clear on that I don't mind having the conversation. And I think oftentimes, without having the conversation, you miss a lot.
What do you think would lead to the most transformational change for our county?
Ooh, that's a, that's a long one, that's a hard one. Um, I mean, cause it's so much, it's so many layers to it. I think, um, when you think about the things that county government is responsible for, they all, for me personally, think, I think they go back to our social economic makeup. Um, when you are talking about public education in Shelby County, whether you're, whether you're in Memphis Shelby County Schools, Arlington, Germantown, Lakeland, Millington, um, trying to name them off the top of my head, um, Bartlett, it still goes back to the parent and the household. And if the household, whether it's your mom, dad, your grandpa, your grandmother, uh, aunt, uncle, whomever is the caregiver, does that caregiver have the best job possible to care for that, those children in the home? Does the caregiver have access to the resources they need to be the best caregiver? Then the child can show up day one ready. Now, unfortunately, that's not what's happening in Shelby County every day. So then you have school systems that have to step up to give that support system to children in that way. So, um, I think we have to look at it at all of the layers. And that to me, oftentimes, I don't think is always happening in Shelby County. I think sometimes we like to play the blame game. Blame game doesn't solve anything. We see it living out right now. We're gonna have to spend some time really thinking about who we wanna be, how we get there, in bringing everyone along the way in order for change to happen.
What is your, what are you most proud of in your time, specifically as the chairwoman of the commission, but, um, I'm open to hearing about the rest of your time on the commission?
Um, I mean, I, I can't sit here and say that I'm not, it's not just the commission. I, you know, there's no way that I, you know, my foundation brought me to where I am present day. Um, on the commission, without a doubt, I can say, in 2022, coming on, I walked into leadership as vice chair of the Board of Commissioners. Um, sitting here today is the third black one, I mean, the third woman ever, let me get the facts right, the third woman ever in all of Shelby County government to hold that chair's role, the second black woman in the history of Shelby County to hold the chair's role. I don't take it lightly, especially when we're in, oftentimes in a climate in a community A, they think women can't lead, they think that, um, women may not deserve the opportunity to lead, and then let alone, let me add the layer of racism. Sexism is one thing, but racism is a whole other thing. So to be able to say that I have, uh, during my time period as chair of the body, we have done huge investments in public safety, and when I, for us, public safety looks different. I'm saying more around, there are, um, each commissioner committed to doing something public safety wise in their individual districts. And that has looked like, um, purchasing more, um, cameras, like Sky Cop cams, it put out throughout their community, that has been more investments in understanding how to have real conversations around community outreach around public safety. We've had a lot of town hall meetings individually, uh, around what it means to get more citizens involved, to kind of do true neighborhood, uh, community, neighborhood watches, uh, investments in that. And that has been a collective conversation, going back to what you originally said about like D's and R's, but it's been a collective conversation around what, what can we do with these dollars to be able to improve our communities via public safety? Um, for me, that's also me personally in 11, doing, um, a couple of blight campaigns around how do we help support some of our citizens get help with blight? Um, Vice Chair Haswell, he's done the same thing, but I say that to say, we've been able to do that because we had a focus on public safety and we had some dollars that were set aside in order to do that. So really fighting for that opportunity is huge. Uh, I think, uh, when we talk about it, we collectively as our legislative agenda, we spent a lot of time around Regional One. Um, that to me has been a huge conversation around why we need a new hospital, the importance of Regional One. If, um, some, Regional One is one of those things where if you don't know, you don't know, but when you know, you know. If you are in a trauma situation and you want to remain living.
That's where you need to go.
You want to go to Regional One. They are going to save you. And that to me is the most important thing around why Regional One not only needs to be strong, but why they need a new hospital. That conversation also is around just the academic hospital. So working in partnership with University of Tennessee to be able to produce more doctors in the state of Tennessee, and then they will be coming out of Shelby County. I've spent a lot of time on that conversation, uh, locally and at, in Nashville, as well as in DC about Regional One. As you can see, I'm very passionate about it. I was born in that hospital. I was born when it was then John Gaston, uh, with a young mom, where because that's the only place you could go, uh, as a young black woman in order to have a baby. So for me to see, to be able to sit here today to advocate for this new hospital, because that's where I was born, because that was the only place people who looked like me could go, is, is that important. But more importantly, now that I know how much they save lives in that hospital, it's needed. Um, still haven't lost my shift around how important it is to build schools, uh, literally, uh, day one, uh, probably maybe day 10, 15, but literally right, right when we got there, um, on 2022, and now continuing the conversation about having to replace the new, um, a new school for the Cardova East Area, uh, where students were in Germantown High School, we're having to displace them because of a new law that was created. I, I can go down that pit hole, I'm not, I'm not gonna go have some real thoughts on it, but where we, we are where we are. So we have to build this new high school to house those students. So being able to continue to push that forward, uh, as well as being able to push the new Fraser High School forward, because that's been a conversation now for quite some time. And all of that is happening, having to build a new hospital, and just in case you didn't, haven't heard in the news, we also gotta build a new jail. We passed a resolution to do a study, which actually started last month, uh, in order to fi- figure out what the numbers are for building a new jail. And, and it's more so around understanding what's the best location, how much is this gonna cost, how do we, how can we afford this? All of the things, all of that has happened in these past 340 days. Uh, I'm kind of holding on, cause I still have about 37 days left, uh, to August 31st. Don't check my math. Uh, I was on it when it said, uh, I think day 45, and I've lost track since then, but it's August 31st is when I, uh, hand over the gavel to our incoming chair, Commissioner Michael Whaley. But within that, this past year, those are some of the things that I've had to tackle and lobby for, advocate for, work for colleagues for, figure out funding for, uh, and still be able to do the thing that I love the most about serving on county commission, is still support community programming.
Sounds like you have a lot to be proud of.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, it's difficult, uh, I guess for me to reflect in that way. I think it's easier ironically for me to reflect on my school board days, because I'm no longer there. So, but like, because I'm like smack dab in the action of these things. Um, someone, just today asked me, I was at a press conference about get out the vote, and someone said, oh, so, you know, how does it feel like, you know, I know you only have a few days left as being a chair, like what are you, you know, looking more, most for it to? I said, actually, I'm looking most forward to advocating for a couple of things that I couldn't really like double down on in the chair's seat. Because that's the catch about what most people don't understand about the chair's role is, your job is to bring people together. Your job is to make sure you're connecting. Your job is to make sure you keep the flow happening. So, um, this actually, this last meeting on Monday, and I do not do this often, in fact, I wanna say this past year, I've only done it twice, where I would leave the chair's seat to then sit in the vice chair's seat to advocate for a thing. Because that's the way you really hold that role. Through the chair's seat, you're not supposed to really spend, spend time advocating for a thing. Your job is to make sure everything functions well. So, uh, I'm looking forward to going back to, uh,
Being hungry again.
Yeah, to my breakfasting, to get back to the action of pushing for a couple of projects that, uh, I think still need to happen.
It was interesting, you mentioned the projects around blight in relation to public safety, and it's so often, public safety is obviously a big topic in Memphis and Shelby County, and when we hear that term, most people think it's synonymous with, uh, you know, police dollars, like fund, funding, funding actual like criminal justice prosecution, that type of thing. But are there any other things around public safety similar to blight that you're like, if we could, if we could move the needle forward on these things, then our, our communities would be safer?
Oh, I, I, I'm gonna go down that line to around like homeownership, rental properties. We spend a lot, um, we have attempted to spend some time, we've got, gotten blocked actually for these past two years, around like just the rental registry, because what happens is when I think of blight, and when I think about, um, why public safety is a huge issue in that, because if you own this property, you have renters, and let's say from whatever reason, they no longer can own, or rather pay their rent, you put them out on the street and you throw all their stuff out there, they don't have a way of moving it, they, you know, they can only pick through it, but then that then brings it sitting on the street. So then what happens is you then have people, loads of people coming picking through the things, then thinking that they can break into the home because they know that it's empty. Then they feel like, oh, they can kind of like ravage the place. Then you have, so then that, then it becomes an eyesore, then it becomes a place where people then decide, oh, well, I'm just gonna hang out here. And if you have several homes like that in a community on one street, what is that? What happens to that street?
It falls into chaos.
Correct. So when I think of public safety on the county side, those are the things that I think about, because you can go through environmental court, um, but if they keep giving someone several chances to fix the problem, then it never gets fixed, or it's taking a really long time. Um, that's a county issue. I'm, I'm excited about, I'm getting ready to be able to spend a little bit more time on that.
Oh, wow, so I can see you're excited.
As all three of us are fellows graduates in this room, my real deal government project was advocating for a rental registry in Memphis and Shelby County. And we, we won, not that that's important, but.
Oh, it's important, those must have been new fellows. I wish you could tell Nashville that ironically, the issue is in Nashville, uh, Metro Nashville Davidson has it, but they keep telling Shelby, we don't need it.
That was a, a key part of our pro, I'll, I'll send you the project.
Okay, absolutely.
So as we kind of wrap up our conversation today, I know we could go in so many more directions, but I would love to hear your advice, um, or motivation for those 18 to 25 who are thinking, you know, not only does, maybe am I unsure if my vote counts, but I'm unsure about my place in this community and about if elected office is ever gonna be for me.
Hmm.
What would you say to people?
Um, 18 to 25 in particular, uh, as I have a Gen Z-er, um, who is a rising senior in, at Tennessee State University, uh, I, I like to slick embarrass him every time that I get, um, who happens to be, um, the vice president of TESL, which is their, uh, intercollegiate state legislature. Uh, so hey, look, I'm saying all the things.
Like a proud mom.
Yes, saying all the things. Um, watching, I'll say, watching him makes me excited, because once you understand the process, once, once you understand that not only does your vote count, but your voice counts, I think you then feel the courage to be a part of it, to be a part of the change. And everybody doesn't have to be elected, and that's the key. Um, I didn't originally come out the gate saying, ooh, yeah, I wanted to be the elected. I think, um, you oftentimes can get a little bit more done not being the elected, quite honestly, because you're still can be the voice, you can still be an opportunity to advocate, you still can push, and at the same time, once you learn the roles, if that's something you're interested in, I think the best thing is to just know what the role is and be a part of it before you decide to put your name on the ballot. Um, there is a strong opportunity for young people to get involved, not, um, whether that's through community programming, I think, cause a lot of times people decide on, oh, I know that we need more money for X, Y, and Z. Where does the money come from? Who funds this?
Mm-hmm.
Who is the pen writer and pen holder? That's ways of entry into understanding around not only just your vote and why it matters, because you wanna vote for the right pen holder. Then you also, your vote matters because you wanna, uh, vote for the right person who's actually casting the vote on your behalf at the local, state, and national level. But a lot of it happens from the grassroots aspect of it, and if it's something you really believe in, start there.
Thank you so much for taking time to kind of share a little bit about your very wonderful journey in elected office here in Shelby County. Um, we are very excited to have these insights and we appreciate you taking the time for that. So thank you, Chairwoman Clay Bins.
Thank you for having me. Uh, enjoyed the conversation, as you can see, um, I, this is what I enjoy. I, I really believe that this work matters. I really believe that we have to do it together though, so that's why it's important for people to show up, um, through advocating and also show up through their vote.
Independent Bank is celebrating 25 years of sharing your stories, building your dreams, and serving you heroically. Find out how I Bank can help you achieve your financial dreams at I-bankonline.com. Member FDIC.